We want to know that I would entertain. What? Entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Is my mic on?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. To go into executive session, discuss personnel matters, homeschooling, applications, and to receive advice about legal matters.
Is there a second? Second by Michelle Goodwin-Cowal. Any questions? All in favor, please address by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We are now in executive session. Good evening, everyone. We're going to go ahead, Chris O'Leary. How are we doing, Chris? Okay. Good evening and welcome to our board meeting Tuesday, November seventeenth, two thousand and twenty. At this time, I would ask if, if Mr. Lewis would give us the, would do the prayer. And following Mr. Lewis, I will ask Ms. Glenda Morrison-Fair if she would lead us with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
Heavenly Father, we pray for all of our students and parents. And we grant that they are safe and supported as they strive to learn in this unknown environment. And for our teachers and staff, we pray that they are safe and supported and equipped to serve all of our students. And for our board, please grant us wisdom and patience in discernment to best serve our students and our staff. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a very exciting evening tonight. We have our Board of Trustees newly elected that will be taking the oath of office. And at this time, I would like to introduce Judge Alex Kinlaw Jr. Judge Kinlaw was born in Georgetown, South Carolina, where he graduated with honors from high school. He attended the University of South Carolina with the Bachelors of Science, and he received his Juris Doctorate from the University of South Carolina Law School. Following law school, Judge Kinlaw was employed as a staff attorney with the Legal Services Agency of Western Carolina. He joined the Office of the Greenville County Public Defenders in nineteen eighty-nine as an Assistant Public Defender. Judge Kinlaw then went into private practice of law in Greenville and Greenwood Counties. In two thousand and nine, Judge Kinlaw was elected by the South Carolina General Assembly as a resident family court judge for the thirteenth Judicial Circuit and has served continuously until his election to the Circuit Court bench on February the seventh, two thousand and eighteen. We are honored to have you with us tonight and to bless us by giving the oath of office to our newly elected Board of Trustees. And I will, I will go in alphabetical order. Is that correct? Are, are you going to do it? Were you going to list them, uh, Mr. Webb?
Judge Kinlaw can.
I, I think.
Hold him out, Judge.
I think I can handle it.
You know what? You've handled it this long, and I know you're going to handle it a long time from now.
All right. And before we get started, first I want to thank the Superintendent Royster and all the administrators, as well as the, all the staff and everyone connected with the school district for making Greenville County the school district, the premier school district, not only in the state, but in this nation. Thank you so much for what you do for the state of South Carolina. Thank you so much for that introduction. We're going to begin the swearing-in ceremony, and I understand under COVID, we're doing it a little differently. You know, so we're going to do it individually. So as I call your name, please come forward and bring any family members that you may have with you. I'm going to start with Mrs. Debbie Bush. Miss Bush, where are you? All right, Ms. Bush, would you place your left hand on the Bible and raise your right and face me? Repeat after me. I do solemnly swear that I am duly qualified according to the Constitution of this state to exercise the duties of the office to which I have been elected and that I will, to the best of my ability, discharge the duties thereof and preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution of this state and of the United States. So help me, God. Congratulations. Get your.
But also like to thank the Bushes for our beautiful flowers tonight, as always.
All right, thank you. All right. We have Mrs. Sarah. And I hope I pronounced this name correctly. Doolin? Doolin, I did it correctly. Come forward. All right, everybody. Okay. She's got it. All right. And Ms. Doolin, place your left hand on the Bible, raise your right. And who is this young lady that's, what's your name? Elizabeth, okay. Raise your right, Ms. Doolin. Repeat after me. I do solemnly swear that I am duly qualified according to the Constitution of this state to exercise the duties of the office to which I have been elected and that I will, to the best of my ability, discharge the duties thereof and preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution of this state and the United States. So help me, God. Congratulations.
I had her standing on a chair.
All right. We have Ms. Michelle Goodwin-Cowal or Cowal.
Want me to go get him? There he is.
All right. Ms. Cowal, put your, place your left hand on the Bible, raise your right and face me. Repeat after me. I do solemnly swear that I am duly qualified according to the Constitution of this state to exercise the duties of the office to which I have been elected and that I will, to the best of my ability, discharge the duties thereof and preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution of this state and of the United States. So help me, God. All right. Congratulations.
Smile.
All right. Next, we have Mrs. Glenda Morrison-Fair.
Glenda.
All right, Ms. Fair, if you would, place your left hand on the Bible, raise your right and face me. Repeat after me. I do solemnly swear that I am duly qualified according to the Constitution of this state to exercise the duties of the office to which I have been elected and that I will, to the best of my ability, discharge the duties thereof and preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution of this state and of the United States. So help me, God. All right, congratulations.
There you go.
All right, now we have Mrs. Angie Mosley. All right. Ms. Mosley, if you would, place your left hand on the Bible and raise your right. Repeat after me. I do solemnly swear that I am duly qualified according to the Constitution of this state to exercise the duties of the office to which I have been elected and that I will, to the best of my ability, discharge the duties thereof and preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution of this state and of the United States. So help me, God. Congratulations.
It's okay, they can get replaced. And Jared got knocked out. My reindeer.
All right. And last but not least, we have Mrs. Carolyn Stiles. And Ms. Stiles, if you would, place your left hand on the Bible, raise your right. Repeat after me. I do solemnly swear that I am duly qualified according to the Constitution of this state to exercise the duties of the office to which I have been elected and that I will, to the best of my ability, discharge the duties thereof and preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution of this state and of the United States. So help me, God. All right, congratulations. This concludes my, my duties today. And I think it was, it was an absolute pleasure for me to be here. As I told the young man as I came in the door, I've been in Greenville for almost thirty-some odd years, and I can probably count on my hand the times I've been in this building. So it's a pleasure to be with you, and I hope you well and God speak.
Thank you.
All right.
Congratulations, new board trustees. This is an honor for all of us, and we're excited for you and your family and all the things that you're going to bring to the board. Thank you. It was a Kodak moment, and Susan Clark, I think, got it all on, on camera. So congratulations to all of you. Adoption of consent calendar, a motion. I will entertain a motion to accept.
Motion to approve.
Second. All in favor, please address by saying aye. Oppose, the motion carries. Four point oh one. There are no visitors. I'm sorry, Mr. Lewis, there are no visitors. So we will move on to five point oh one, Superintendent's Report. Dr. Royster, I know you don't have a presentation, but I know you, you have something special for us.
I do. Thank you, Ms. Lomis Wells. It's my privilege tonight, as has been tradition, superintendents. The November Superintendent's Report, we cede our time to the Teacher of the Year. We're very fortunate tonight to have Angelica Childs with us. She teaches at Summit Drive Elementary School ordinarily, third grade, but this year is teaching virtual third grade. You will find that she is an excellent representative of the teaching profession. She is very articulate. I won't tell you a lot about her story because I sense she may tell you some of that in her comments. But I do know that she is extremely interested in and has devoted a considerable amount of her time as a teacher to mentoring other teachers, particularly mentoring first-year teachers and coaching first-year teachers. She does that much in the same way that she so effectively teaches her students. And it is by establishing a warm and caring relationship with them, like setting high expectations, but coaching them towards those. So we are most pleased to have her represent all the teachers in Greenville County as the Greenville County Schools Teacher of the Year. And it's a pleasure to have her with us tonight and have her share her thoughts with us. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Royster. Good evening, and thank you for allowing me the privilege to speak to you all tonight. Again, my name is Angelica Childs, and I am the newly selected Teacher of the Year for Greenville County. I am currently teaching with a virtual program, but my home base is at Summit Drive Elementary. I first want to thank Dr. Royster for your dedication to our district and your initiative to create well-rounded individuals who are prepared and ready for college or career at the end of their time in our schools. I also want to thank the board for ensuring excellence in our schools by the way that you have kept students in mind as you analyze our needs, establish policies, and allocate resources to support us. Tonight, I would like to share some of my own story with you. I come from a large Puerto Rican family of educators. And in my family, we say disfruta el viaje, which means enjoy the journey. That mantra was never more needed than it was in my first year's teaching in a failing school in New Orleans, Louisiana, with a program called Teach for America. The journey was difficult. I struggled and I failed every single day of those first few years. It was then that I realized, as the saying goes, that teaching is not my job. It is my passion. Getting better at teaching, that is my job. Since coming to Greenville County, I have been surrounded by individuals who have sharpened me. Not only have teachers and administrators strengthened me, but I, I have also been shaped by cafeteria workers, custodial staff, bus drivers, social workers, and countless others who tirelessly work to serve our students in Greenville County. Seeing their excellent dedication and unconditional love for students inspires me. So I share my story of teaching with a rocky start to encourage you to continue pouring into the employees of our district who have poured into me. As our district supports and provides for our teachers, we will continue to give all that we have to our students. I take on this task, as Dr. Royster said, by supporting teachers myself, by serving as a cooperating teacher for university students, a mentor to first-year students, and a peer evaluator through the ADEPS evaluation team. Although I work in what I believe is the best school district, I do this because teacher attrition has become an epidemic in our country. I believe that giving support and a listening ear to new and veteran teachers, we can make a difference and, and impact students both now and for years to come. I have come a long way, thankfully, since my first years in the classroom. But even as Teacher of the Year for our great district, I still have a long road of growth ahead of me. I want to continue to challenge myself to become better for my students so that they can be innovative leaders around the globe with the same growth mindset. So I implore you to continue to provide me and other school employees in our district with the training and support we need to serve students in our classroom, particularly students who are most at risk. I am proud that at my school, we have prioritized training in social emotional growth, character development, and adverse child experiences. As we focus on these things, it will have a positive impact on the students and families in our district. By working together on this, we can cultivate neighborhoods, communities, and a world in which every child can thrive. As an educator, I need continued development in these areas as well, as well as other culturally responsive teaching pedagogy as I recognize the importance of including students' cultural references and home lives in all aspects of learning. In our current cultural climate, our support in preparing the employees of our district to handle these challenges so that we can serve our students. Thank you.
Thank you so much. That was great. Thank you, Dr. Royster. I don't think we could have heard better words and more profound. And plus Summit is in my district. But anyway, moving on. Six point oh one, IB elementary programs. There's a recommended motion from the Committee of the Whole to eliminate the IB primary years program at Chandler Creek and Heritage Elementary School based on staff and community input. It needs no second. Any discussion? Ms. Wells.
Thank you, Ms. Lomis Wells. So I apologize, I wasn't here for the Committee of the Whole. Now, I think I got to hear most of the discussion, but there, there were pieces of it that I might have missed. So just for clarification, these, these programs were special programs that have with them assigned resources that support the IB program. So in terms of those resources, whether it's a half FTE or additional monies for the PYP accreditation, et cetera, is this something that's going to stay? Those resources are going to stay with the school and be reassigned? Or is that something that's going to be put back into the IB program at the high schools that we have remaining?
The staff development resources go back into staff development pool of funding, as you know. Well, we've significantly reduced that this year. That's a pretty small amount. We can send you those amounts. As I recall correctly, there is a one point oh FTE at Chandler Creek that is a Spanish teacher. Because we lack Spanish instruction at the elementary level, we, we will leave that teacher in place there so as not to discontinue foreign language. If anything, we've tried to expand foreign language at the elementary level, and we are always faced with a shortage of language teachers. Currently, they do not have a language teacher at, um, I'm sorry, I had that backwards. Spanish teacher at Heritage, not at Chandler Creek. Chandler Creek had Spanish and could not find a teacher. I believe they have a point five FTE at Chandler Creek, which would go back into the pool of FTEs. I'm not currently aware of any particular need at a high school IB program that has not been recognized or agreed.
Why don't we discontinue the MIP programs? One of the things we, we did is reallocated resources that we could support the diploma program and students. You're moving through that program, so just.
We did, and I, I'm not aware of any outstanding request from one of the, after having received those transfer resources.
All right. Any other questions? Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Wells. Anyone else? Hearing none? All in favor, please address by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, and the motion carries. Six point oh two, waiver of grade five and six MAP testing for twenty, twenty twenty-one. Recommended motion from the Committee of the Whole. Having it come from the Committee of the Whole, it needs no second, therefore, any discussion. Ms. Wells? Ms. Wells was not.
Again. You know, just to clarify, so this, this waiver came because we have in the strategic ed plan the MAP testing for these two grades specifically so that we can benchmark ourself against a national data set.
Yes, that's correct.
Right, so, but with COVID, the idea being that we need to save and, and protect instructional time. Do we know in terms of MAP testing kind of across the nation, do we have any, any sense of what other districts are doing in terms of testing requirements that they're implementing or continuing to implement?
I don't know if Mr. McCoy might have any sense of that. As I mentioned earlier in our workshop session, unfortunately, Dr. McCrary is not able to be with us tonight.
I can just tell you anodally, the, it's very difficult to get approved to do online MAP testing. So most districts are not able to do that. So if they have any kind of hybrid version, at least my colleagues in other parts of the country, I mean, they're suspended that for a year, waived that requirement, given that they have, many of their, are not in school at all right now currently.
Yeah, when you say online, you mean online from home.
Correct, so many of them are full online right now, correct.
So, so the intention is just for this year to let that go for that purpose?
That's correct, yes, ma'am.
So the, and the, so the benchmarks that we'll rely upon to assess where our students are are primarily going to be using our TE twenty-one data, which is specifically aligned to our state standards. And our comparison set then is going to be against previous years and where we think they should be in the progression from a time standpoint.
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
And so no other, second grade will still do the COGAT and the MAP?
They, yes, ma'am, they'll still do COGAT and MAP for the GT identification.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Recommended motion coming from the Committee of the Whole, needs no second. All in favor, please address by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, and the motion carries. Seven point oh one, committee and liaison reports. Mr. Sailors, do you have the report? Yes, sir.
Can you hear me now? Thank you. Let me start again. We would like to have a meeting of the committee next, at our CACAL meeting. And between now and then, we'll be assembling some information right to the committee at that time. As you all remember, some time ago, Dr. Royster and the finance staff has shared with us the concerns that we have, we will be facing. the concerns that we have, we will be facing related to the 2122 budget cycle. As of yesterday, and this number may change, the Board of Economic Advisors has stated that if the resources for the state stay as they are currently, we will have roughly $34 million statewide in revenue in excess for that budget cycle. This past year, we were looking at $2 billion. So we're going to have some challenges in the budget unless something changes. So that'll be one of the considerations that we need to be addressing. And for the information of board, Representative Gary Smith is now the chairman of the Greenville Legislative Delegation, and Senator Tom Corbin is the vice chair. That's it for tonight, ma'am.
Thank you for sharing that information, Mr. Sailors. I appreciate that. Mr. Lewis?
Thank you, ma'am, chairman. Just a quick update for the board. As the secretary, I learned, in addition to my other responsibilities, I'm responsible for scheduling school visits. And so we will have up to two school visits per month, starting in January. If you have any preferences for schools or locations in the district that you would like to visit, if you'll let me know, then we'll work with the administration to try to find some dates to put those out as optional visits.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. I think I told our new trustees that we had two that I thought would be really great, and one's in your area, so they're all our schools. Yes, ma'am. No. We didn't do them last year because of COVID, but we did them with Mr. Sailors. We went to a few sites, yes. We've done them every year, so...
Ma'am, I'm sure if I could. We've had tours in the past, but not on a monthly basis.
But not on a monthly.
Because of our schedules.
We did like two or three.
Because of our personal schedules, we tried to keep it quarterly.
Right. Okay. All right. Any other reports? Committee auditing? All right. 8.01 Monthly Finance Report. Dr. Royster?
Thank you, Ms. Lomontis Wells. I believe that Miss Stack has a brief financial report. As you recall, we shared with you, Green Finney has not been able to conclude the external audit, because there is a requirement that they do an audit of CARES Act funds. The guidance for the audit standards has not... had not yet been sent down from the federal government. The state of South Carolina postponed the requirement that all of our audits be in... previously, it was December, and I guess they pushed that to January. Green Finney is in the process of working on that single audit. When they do, they'll pull together, we'll be able to present the caper. We do have some financial insight. The bad news in Mr. Sailor's report is looking forward to $34 million, perhaps in excess of this year's projected, which was based on actually, that time will be two years ago. But the good news in that is, at this point, we do not anticipate any mid-year reductions this year. Now, that again could change going into the spring, but right now, that appears less likely than it would have been a little bit ago. So, Miss Stack?
Thank you, Dr. Royster. Presented to you tonight is the financial statements through the month of September. As the month ended, we did not see any dips in tax collections. In other words, they were in line with the prior year and with budget. So far, the month of October, we did see a slight dip in vehicle taxes, but that's really not any indication of things to come. For state revenue, we are still receiving funds in line with last year and also in line with our budget. And just to reiterate what Mr. Sailors and Dr. Royster said, the BEA met last week and is still... while they did reduce their projection of revenue, once again, they are still projecting a slight surplus for FY21. And no indication of mid-year cuts for state revenue. So I am here to take on any questions.
Are there any questions from Miss Stack?
Yes, Ms. Michelle Colwell. Good one, Colwell. Miss Stack, I think a couple of years ago, I asked about the minority vendors, and I'm still looking at this list of some that's on there that I don't think are minority vendors.
Actually, when we get that report from procurement, we go and research those before we include them in our monthly board reports.
Funds and supply of... Is... Okay. What are the qualifications of being a minority vendor? Because I mean, when I looked at the history, it doesn't look like it is.
I can get you that information.
Okay. I would like that information. So, thank you. Yes.
Any other questions? Ms. Wells?
Dr. Royster, can you kind of summarize what potential impact we've had in our food and nutrition services funds? We've definitely operated a lot differently. We aren't serving meals in our schools with the same rate as we were previously. I guess we're doing boxed lunches now. So just can you give me some kind of indication of kind of where we are? It's always been a rather healthy fund. We've always managed that fund very well and been able to be sure that we were covering long-term expenses like our equipment replacement when we needed it and some other things. So what kind of impact are we looking at there long-term?
Our actions from mid-March through the fall of this year drew down the fund balance in food and nutrition services by about $4 million, probably. And to your first comment, we had a very healthy fund balance there for a couple of reasons. One being set aside for replacement of equipment. And in fact, budgeted within the food service fund balance is all the kitchen equipment for the facility at Roper Mountain and the kitchen equipment for Fountain Inn High School, as well as replacement for Best Era food service equipment that needs to be replaced on a cyclical basis. We're probably at about $16 million fund balance for food and nutrition services. We're down about four. We are working to receive some additional reimbursement. I don't believe that's yet been approved, so I hesitate to give an amount for that, but I think it would help to make us whole again. So we're eligible for some additional federal reimbursement through the county.
But you're saying we still have 16?
No, we have 12 right now.
We had 16, we had 12. And then in terms of the expenditures that we were expecting with Fountain Inn and Roper Mountain?
That's coming out of the 12, but we expected it to come out of the fund balance to begin with. The other thing that will help us now that we have more students back in school, we're able to expand offerings. That's already occurred at the elementary level. We... I'm not sure I'm phrasing this correctly. We're not supposed to talk about profit and loss in food and nutrition services, but it assists with our revenue where we're able to serve our card items, sell those things. We're able to do more of that now that we're back in elementary, being back in more days at middle school will help that as well. So we don't believe that we're facing any sort of long-term issue with the negative impact of the coronavirus on food service operations. And you all know, they served a huge number of meals. I think the final count was well over $2 million before we started food service for the fall. So we're in good... we're in excellent financial shape going into this. We're still in extremely strong financial shape. Now, we don't need to continue along a path. We'll get that kind of money going out the door in excess of what we're bringing in. We do not see that as being an immediate issue we're concerned. We certainly carefully watch it.
Right. Great. And then, yeah, because I guess coming into not knowing what to expect next summer in terms of what we might want to provide, summer feeding programs, et cetera, kind of having a sense of what that looks like and how the community might be affected for it. Similarly, with the building expenses or the facilities upgrades and things that we were doing, I know we kind of slowed down, put some things on hold. Where are we tracking in terms of costs from contractors? We had the feeling that we were going to get some better pricing than maybe what we had budgeted. Are we seeing that, or has there not really been any change?
As I recall, the last conversation I had with Colonel Carlin about Fountain Inn, it's slightly under. I believe Fountain Inn was slightly under. Like Summit Drive is probably about where it was projected to be. We placed on hold the proposed innovation center, or scheduled innovation center, to be located at the foot of Roper Mountain for career and technical. Because that, the funds set aside for the construction of that building actually were general fund, fund balance, I believe, right at $10 million. We're still holding that. And we will have, I believe, to be able to report to you a fairly healthy addition to fund balance when Green Finney closes out the audit. So we believe we're in very solid financial condition. Again, not knowing what lies ahead for next year, we certainly want to be prepared for that. It seems now that mid-year cuts are a little bit less likely.
And the thing, to your point, the thing we don't know is, part of the reason we're not seeing such impact is because we were basically able to carry our budget forward with what the state gave us. They kind of kept us on par where we were, but we may still see...
You know, we froze. We did freeze some items in our budget, but basically, we rolled over last year's budget with a few changes that we needed to make in it, but not the large-ticket items, which always in our business are salary and free.
And on the frozen items, are you thinking you might bring back in January, February? I mean, what will be the process before saying we go ahead and spend those?
I'm not sure. I'm not sure that we would. It may simply be we recommend that we leave those frozen so they can become part of the fund balance or addition for the coming year.
Right. Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Sabin?
Miss Stack? What was our general fund balance in August? And it went down to one in September?
Can you ask that again? I didn't hear you.
Isn't it? I'm looking at the general fund, fund balance.
Yes, sir.
And I'm looking here at FY 2021. In August, what was the amount that we had there? And how much did it go down in September? Looking at the graph.
Sir, I would have to get you the exact figure for August, because we don't normally do an August financial statement, because we're working on closing out the prior year.
About fiscal year 2020, I noticed it went down fairly steep.
Are you looking at the graph?
Yes. Please ask about the graph.
Okay. Okay. So it would have been $180 million, and it fell through the month of September down
Well, I think it would be logical to assume it will continue to go down?
Yes, sir. That is the normal route, because our tax revenue doesn't start coming in strong until late November into December and then on into January. So we will use our cash reserves to fund our expenses until that tax revenue starts coming in. That's why you see a downward slope.
If I'm reading this chart correctly, 2020, we went down from $160 million down to $100 million. So we lost $60 million? Am I reading that right?
From August down to October, yes, sir.
That did go down 60 million?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
I believe the trend you're seeing there, Ms. South, may represent where you all voted to move fund balance funds to a designated purpose, then it moves out of fund balance. I think that would be the January. Any drop after January would reflect a transfer of funds. I think that's what he might be asking, Miss Stack.
Okay.
The drop between October and the first of the year is going to reflect us using that cash to meet our cash flow needs until local property taxes come in in January.
We used $60 million?
Sir?
We used $60 million?
For cash flow? Quite likely.
Yeah. Payroll is a good bit of that each month.
None of that, Dr. Royster, was dependent upon the virus. That was all prior to the virus.
Right. I don't think you're going to see anything on this fund balance chart that's going to relate really to the virus, other than we didn't come in and ask you to set aside any money from fund balance to do anything, and probably won't do that this year because of the virus. Almost every year, what you'll see is you'll see that drop like this. Then you'll see when the taxes come in, it goes back up. Then you'll see another decline, and that second decline generally represents when you all have approved non-recurring expenditures out of your fund balance. That's generally what those lines are going to look like. That's why they almost all look the same, look back over the six fiscal years that are represented on the graph.
So you're saying, Dr. Royster, that it got to the high in December, and then it goes down in January, and it keeps going down?
Because as you may recall, we quite frequently come to you when Green Finney Horton completes the audit, and we recommend to you some non-recurring expenditures to come out of that fund balance money. That's going to cause this undesignated or unassigned fund balance to drop down. It moves from the unassigned, either gets transferred to a general fund account, or it moves to a designated fund balance account.
Does it appear, Dr. Royster, that when we do our budget, that money's going to come out of the general fund budget?
No, sir. Now, it might be likely that we recommend that you utilize some of the fund balance to offset reductions in anticipated revenue for the general fund, as we did in 2009 and 2009, 2010 during the Great Recession.
That's all I have. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Royster.
Good one, Colwell.
When do we get the bulk of our revenue in? Because I'm looking at it, and it looks like we haven't received our funds. When do we usually receive the funds for those special revenue accounts?
They're... Most of them are on a claim basis, so we have to spend the money first and then claim it from the State Department. And...
Federal, too. That's federal also.
Yes, ma'am. So that normally, we start claiming usually at the first of the year after the September quarter, and then we try to do monthly, monthly claims, especially for the bigger funds.
Going in January.
Me.
Going in January.
September. September. So we wouldn't get our money in until October, because we have to submit a claim.
Okay. That's all, ma'am.
Thank you. Colonel, I think we brought you upstairs because Ms. Wells had questions about if we're staying within budget for Fountain Inn and also Summit Elementary. Is that wrong? I didn't hear.
I'm sorry, Ms. Lomitas Wells, can you restate the question?
Sure. A question was brought up about, are we staying within budget on the addition to Summit Elementary? And also, how are we looking at Fountain Inn High School?
Absolutely. We're in budget on both of those projects. Matter of fact, we're in budget on all the projects. And like Dr. Royster said earlier, we, the only project that we're not taking action on right now is the incubator project, which we put on hold. Everything else is going smoothly and within budget.
Okay. I was also, I thought it was a good question because I've heard so much about new construction and how the materials have increased tremendously due to COVID and getting the materials in as far as lumber and so forth. Is that correct?
Well, there are some.
Not affecting our district.
There are some building materials that have gone up, like lumber for residential houses has gone up dramatically. Interestingly enough, though, and we've heard that prices could go up on a number of materials, even within the, in the commercial and industrial areas. We haven't seen that directly. But I tell you, what we have experienced is, we bid the, or the contractor bid the building package on Summit Drive Elementary and got very competitive pricing. Probably if nothing else, because the contractors are prepared to be very hungry for work right now.
Good. It's, we both went out on it then.
Yes, ma'am.
I like win-win situations, so very good. Dr. Royster, do you have anything else you'd like to add?
Well.
Okay. Well, I'd just like to thank the new board trustees that have joined us and the ones that were reelected. This is probably the earliest meeting. We will be adjourning.
What about us all?
Yes, sir. All in favor, please address by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, and welcome to the Greenville County School Board. Thank you.